I'm not sure I'm going to read the saying. Yeah, it says third, but they don't necessarily have what.
Hi, welcome, everybody. It is one o'clock. We're going to go ahead and call today's workshop for the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners. Call this meeting to order. It's Monday, January 22nd. If everybody could please stand for the pledge. I'll let the record know that Commissioner Pennington is excused. She called in and will not be attending today. And also, if we could take this a brief moment of silence for a few seconds of individual prayer, reflection, meditation, we take this time to honor and remember first responders and the men and women of the military who keep us safe locally and protect our freedoms at home and abroad. Thank you. All right, this is kind of a hybrid. We didn't, we only had one meeting in the month of January, so we've got a couple of items that may require the special meeting to follow. And we will take care of a proclamation since this day occurs before the next meeting. So this is a proclamation designating February 3rd, 2024 as four chaplain Saturday. And Commissioner Sullivan is going to read this. Will you be accepting, Mr. Lyden? Okay, great. Thank you.
Come forward. Thanks, Chairman. Proclamation of the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners, designating February 3rd, 2024 as four chaplain Saturday. Whereas February 3rd, 2024 will mark the 81st anniversary of the sinking of the troop ship USAT Dorchester, which carried to their deaths four U.S. Army chaplains of three faiths, who stood united in prayer as the ship went down. And whereas these four captains, four chaplains, Roman Catholic, Jewish, and Protestant, gave their own life jackets to four soldiers and thus sacrificed their own lives to save the lives of others. And whereas the heroic deeds of chaplains Lieutenant George L. Fox, Lieutenant Alexander D. Good, Lieutenant John P. Washington, and Lieutenant Clark V. Poling, and their combined act of supreme devotion and sacrifice for American liberty and human freedom will be an inspiring and ever-shining example of real brotherhood for all time to the people of the world. And whereas we must all see to it that their supreme sacrifice to the common cause of human freedom and justice for all shall not have been in vain. Now therefore, the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners do hereby designate Saturday, February 3rd, 2024 as four chaplain Saturday, and encourage Flagler County residents to commemorate the day with the appropriate observances and ultimate sacrifice, or this ultimate sacrifice adopted this 22nd day of January 2024, attested Tom Bexley, clerk of court, and signed by our chairman, Danz.
Did you want to go ahead and move that?
And I'll move that, move that we agree to the proclamation. I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Sullivan, second by Commissioner Hanson. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. You'll need a picture. Could you go to the, the mic? Sorry, nobody will hear you.
I'm Dave Lyden, Flagler County Veteran Services. On behalf of American Legion Post 115, I accept this proclamation. They have a ceremony acknowledging the sacrifices of the four chaplains at the VFW Post 8696 on February 3rd at 1:00.
It is February 3rd, okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you again.
Great, thank you. Did you want a picture with us?
If you insist.
Come on, we got, Carlos is on his way.
Thanks again.
And Mr. Chairman, it's always a very impressive ceremony they have at the VFW, and it's a nice thing to attend.
Again, it's February 3rd at 1:00 p.m. at the VFW. All right, so today's workshop is all about economic development and incentives. So Ms. Petito, how do we want to start this off? I know you have some presentation for us.
I'm going to just hand it over to Amy and Dolores to go over what they've come up with as far as economic development incentives. As you know, this is something we've talked about for probably the good part of maybe a year and a half to two years. And this is really just the culmination of all the work that they put into it.
Thank you. Thank you, Amy.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. My name's Amy Lukasik, Tourism Development Director. Also here with me is Dolores Key. She's our Economic Development Manager. And although I may be the face of the presentation, it is really Dolores who has been the subject matter professional and doing hours and hours, if not weeks, of research and time and work that has been put into this packet that was provided to you. All right, agenda. So we're going to cover a few of these items rather quickly, and all the information is pretty much just a brief recap of what was in your packet. And then at the conclusion, we will answer any questions, open for discussion. We also have two guests here that we want to be, have them the opportunity to share some insight into some specific programs. So why are we here? As you know, one of your focus areas is economic vitality, which is to improve quality of life by enhancing economic vitality in Flagler County. And that goal is to diversify the tax base to improve the local economy with a specific objective to research, develop, and implement options for economic development incentive programs. So since last time you saw this slide, we do have an update of the top 10 states for doing business in 2023. And as you can see, Florida is number eight. Let's talk about Florida. So the good news is that Florida moved up from last year. Last year it was 11, and in the year before it was 17. And there's about 10 categories and about 86 metrics that go into the scoring. You can see the 10 categories there, with number one being the economy of the state. And that's what has put us in that spot. So now let's talk a little bit more about the latest data we have for Flagler County and the workforce. The Flagler's top five employers continue to be Advent Health, Publix, Yellowstone Reunion Club, and Boston Whaler. And for Flagler County's workforce, this is the latest information we received last week for Q2 for 2023. As you can see there on the blue graph, available workforce is almost 53,000. Out of that 53,000, 51,000 are working, and out of that 51,000, 27,511 are working in Flagler County, which equates to about 46% of our workforce commutes to another county for employment. So what are economic development incentives? They can come from federal, state, or local government. They provide assistance to possible investors. They're given on a discretionary basis. They're used to attract, retain, and promote and encourage business, and they can either come statutory or discretionary. So we're going to briefly go over the nine items for consideration and direction. Fast-track permitting, which entails standard operating procedure. Ad valorem, real property tax abatement, and tangible personal property tax abatement. Incentive wage grants, recaptured enhanced value grant program, impact fee grant program, public-private partnerships, industrial development revenue bonds, and industrial development authority. Our first one is fast-track permitting. This one helps accelerate the planning, zoning, and building permitting process. This is pretty much just a standard operating procedure that would be crafted by our growth management department. It has no effects on the general fund. It does not sacrifice any requirements as established through the county's code or comprehensive plan, and companies still must meet specific criteria to qualify this program. Pretty much what we do now is more of an informal process. We do have fast-track permitting for affordable housing, so we would look to have that as well for our program.
Just one question on that. I believe when we were in Tallahassee last week, there is some sort of legislation in the form of possible bill to make, increase the rules on fast-track permitting. In other words, cities will be faced and counties will be faced with time limits by law that they're allowed to do the permitting process. Did you remember hearing anything about that? There was something going on on that, on that side. It's not one of our priorities, but there was something about that in process in Tallahassee.
I believe it's, it's checks and balances and, and standard permitting processes.
But I thought it was time limits.
Yeah, but in normal, I think it has to do with normal permitting. This would be separate level of incentive of.
Oh, that we're doing, yeah. What we're talking about here. But I just thought that was interesting, you know, it's in that category.
Thank you.
So the next one is the ad valorem real property tax abatement. This one would have effect on your general fund, this one, and the next one, which is pretty much the same, one is property tax, one is personal, tangible personal property, same legal approach. It goes to referendum for vote. In property tax, abatement refers to the reduction in property taxes that a company pays on any given property. It's traditionally the first five years of operation of a company relocating or expanding, which is the most expensive. So by offering a tax abatement during those first years of operation, a company must be able to reach peak performance and job creation at a faster rate. It applies to new construction for expanding or existing companies, and relocating companies would be eligible to apply for new construction as well as existing buildings.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Question?
Go ahead.
So we've used this in the past.
You've used it in the form of the rev grant.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to get at. So this, this would be a, a, a permanent program that's in place, but we have to get it done through referendum first and then consider individual items as they come along.
Yes, you still would have.
So the difference is, in the past, we did it as an individual one-off, basically, to, to a couple of companies.
Yes.
Okay. So we would have to, 2024, put this on the ballot if we want to do this?
Not necessarily, 2024. It could be viewed as it's a pretty heavy lift because it requires a lot of education and public awareness to the community. So if the board wanted to take some time to, to do that, that sort of initiative, then we could possibly wait or.
This is a.
There's a long lead time, though, to get this kind of thing done.
It would be at your discretion.
And this is a toolbox thing, once it's there.
Yeah, if you have.
Yeah, okay.
So the next one, the tangible, pretty much the same thing. The types of businesses, they would file a tangible personal property tax return with the county property tax appraiser. These are proprietorships, partnerships, corporations, self-employed, leases. Tax abatement would be offered through the reimbursement program after proof of purchase and installation of the needed equipment for production or services. All right, our next one is a grant. It also would affect the general fund. The legal approach for this one is to draft up a resolution to create the program. The grant is to encourage the relocation expansion of companies that pay 125% of the annual wage in Flagler, which equates to 60% higher than the pri, and then the poverty line. The grant would complement the quick response training grant that's already offered by Career Source Florida.
Amy, quick question. Is this, so it says relocation expansion, so an existing company that's expanding could take advantage?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Next one is probably the one you're more familiar with, is a recaptured enhanced grant, or rev grant for short. The more formal process is again, a resolution to create the program. Effects on, it does have an effect on the general fund. It's a base year of value is established by the property appraiser of a project site, and then a certain percentage of the county's incremental increase from the base year of the taxes paid on real property may be available as a grant. This program is often used in lieu of the tax abatement program. So what we thought might be helpful is to give you a chart and just as a sample example to show what that would look like. And so we did, so the original investment of $10 million would apply for all 10 years, same operating millage, and then it shows the taxes that they normally would pay. And then you could see how the first years, one through five, they receive a 75% discount. Year six through 10, company receives 50%, and then year 11, they go back. So the company would still need to meet all the other program parameters to qualify for a rev grant. And again, this is 10 million in construction with 30 value-added jobs. Impact fee grant program. This is another tool for the Department for incentivizing economic development projects. This is basically interest earned from impact fees may be used to offer economic development incentive programs. But the interest used from those impact fees must be used for the same purposes. For example, interest earned from previously collected road impact fees may be used to offset road impact fees of an economic development project. What's nice about this one is that this would not have any effect on the general fund because, again, we're using that interest. It allows a dedicated fund, a line item in your budget that is not tied to ad valorem.
I have a couple of questions on this one. In reading the backup materials, it talks about the need to set up a separate accounting system to track the interest that's earned for each one of the impact fee accounts. Are we doing that now? Is it something that we could go back and do, go backwards?
Yeah. That would be administration or legal finance question.
Through the clerk's office, they actually have different account numbers for each fund, so it would be easy to go back and see where it's recorded based on the fund, where they're putting those impact fees. I don't know if you can go back in time and capture it, like, I guess, post, you know, after we've already accepted it. I don't know the timing of when it could be implemented and the laws that pertain to whether or not you can go back retro and capture it. But it is segregated out in the budget through finance, though.
Are those impact fees placed in a bank? Or are they earning interest?
They are, they're invested, they're accruing interest, but I think, you know, the county's investment policies are probably very conservative, so it might not be generating that much. That might be something we'd have to talk to the clerk.
But we're not, I would imagine, we don't probably have a separate investment account for every one of these buckets. It's, the money's lumped together in, in our investment accounts. But if, if we have separate accounting for each one of the funds, then we could attribute whatever interest rate we're earning, you know, for whatever period back to those funds.
And I believe that's how they accrue it now, is basically through that same concept.
Okay.
And this also would follow affordable housing. We have impact fee waivers written into that as well.
Right, incentive number seven is the public-private partnership. How, a proposed concept that probably has come before our, our department in the past is that either the county or joint with municipality could purchase a large tract of land anywhere between 150 to 200 acres in order to reserve space for light industrial park. We then would issue an RFP for a joint venture in development of the park. The county or municipality and/or both would own the land. The developer would be responsible for infrastructure and buildings. And as the building sells or leases at market value, the government would recover the land price investment. Again, this would have effect on your general fund, and this is done through a resolution. All right, next is our industrial development revenue bonds. These are otherwise known as IDRBs. They're used to finance business and industrial expansions for firms with strong credit. IDRBs can provide low-interest loans for large projects by permitting the borrowers to take advantage of long-term financing with lower-than-prime interest rates. And they're authorized to, to occur through the Florida statutes. Bonds will be still approved through the county commission with principal and interest paid solely by the company receiving the funding. This is done through resolution and not have any effect on your general fund. We do have one of our guest speakers, so when we're done with this, with the presentation, I ask that you save those questions for those subject matter experts. And how these bonds can be issued is through an industrial development authority, and this is created through a resolution. The board appoints five members, they adopt bylaws, and select the bond council. The authorities are created for the purpose of financing and refinancing projects to foster economic development, and the authority may issue revenue bonds or other debt obligations repayable solely from revenues derived from the sale, operation, or leasing of projects. Again, what's nice about this one is that it sets up an account, a line item, that's dedicated just for economic development and does not rely on the general fund. And this is an example of the process flow. We took this from St. John's County. This is an example of a typical fee structure of the issuance. Application fee, 1,500, and then financing fees never exceed 75,000. The collected funds from the issuance of IDRBs are then used to finance and support economic development projects within the county. And with that, I'll give a brief introduction. We have Mr. Weinstein, and he represents the bond applicant. And then we have Mr. McCabe, and he represents the IDA, the Industrial Development Authority. And I asked them just to share, not only answer your questions, but just to share any tips, tricks, lessons learned, and things we should be conscientious of if we go that route. And then from there, we can have any few, if more future discussions, any other meetings, but we are looking for consensus from the board of which program staff can either take off the table and which programs we can bring back for approval to include a detailed timeline, an action plan, and to implement depending on what that legal approach that the program calls for. With that, I'd like to bring up our guest. Do we have questions? First, okay.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. I'm Herb Weinstein with Rogers Towers Firm in Jacksonville. I'm a bond lawyer, and I was asked to speak about bond financing. So the federal tax code permits the financing of certain projects on a tax-exempt basis, and that's really the benefit that borrowers get from this, that they can borrow money at a tax-exempt rate. The first thing that these borrowers have to consider is who's going to buy the bonds. So in other words, they shouldn't come before whatever the issuing authority is until they figure out who's going to buy the bonds, how they sell the bonds to somebody else. Typically, these bonds, if they're, let's say, up to $10 million for what's called small-issue bonds, then a bank would buy those. That would be the typical purchaser of such a bond. But also, these tax-exempt bonds can be for the benefit of 501(c)(3) corporations. That's nonprofit corporations that have an exemption under 501(c)(3) of the federal tax code. Typically, in this type of financing, that would be hospitals or continuing care retirement communities. That's who typically benefits from these types of bonds. And those deals aren't limited to the $10 million limit. If it's a 501(c)(3) bond, essentially, you can issue whatever amount that is needed. Typically, those bonds aren't bought by banks, but sometimes they are. Oftentimes, they're underwritten by underwriting firms, sometimes large underwriting firms, sometimes smaller underwriting firms. These bonds can be issued by the county, the county commission, or you can set up an, an industrial, a, essentially, a separate IDA and industrial development authority to issue these bonds, but you don't have to. The county could issue the bonds themselves. All of these bonds we're talking about are what's called conduit financings. In other words, you have to go through a governmental body to get the benefit of the tax exemption. You can't just borrow the money, the borrower, on its own. You have to go through the government. And under the state law, the governmental body is not liable for paying back the bonds. Essentially, the, the bonds are paid back by the money that the borrower pays to the authority. And typically, the money doesn't go through the authority anyway. It's just a, a legal fiction that it goes through the authority, and typically, the borrower will pay back the bondholders, sometimes through a trustee, or sometimes directly to the bank. One of the problems with these bonds is that there is this $10 million limit. That $10 million limit has been around for over 40 years in the tax code. Maybe one day it'll be changed, but right now, it's $10 million. That's not a lot of money, especially when you consider that there's also a rule that says you have to, you can't spend more than $10 million in capital expenditures in the county during a six-year period that begins three years before you issue the bonds and ends three years after that period. So if it's an existing business that has made recent significant capital expenditures, then this $10 million limit is going to be a problem. Because let's say if it's invested already $5 million in the last couple of years in the county, that eats into the $10 million that it can use. If it's only $1 million worth of bonds, oddly enough, under the federal tax code, this $10 million limit does not apply. And so a company that has $50 million in recent capital expenditures can borrow $1 million, but it's probably not worth borrowing $1 million and going through the trouble of having a governmental issuer approve it, et cetera. So a lot of times, the real significant benefit for this type of program is for a 501(c)(3) issuer. I, I think those are really the key points. Again, it's, it's just, you can, there are benefits to having a separate industrial development authority. That authority develops some level of expertise in dealing with this, but if you have your own economic development people, you could handle it through the county commission. So it, it's not absolutely clear that you have to have an industrial development authority, although, again, there could be some benefits. A lot of counties have industrial development authorities. Some counties don't have industrial development authorities. And that's, that's pretty much the overview. I'm happy to answer any particular questions you might have.
But I think you answered one from Mr. Weinstein. So we could actually do one of these issuances without having an authority in place.
Absolutely.
And I think we've done them before, but not necessarily on the economic development side. And I think we've done them pretty much in conjunction, like, the bank was the, the driver in the process, I think, if I'm not mistaken. Done during my time, I think, one or two of them. But if I also read, I, I was reading about St. John's process. I pulled their, the documents from the, from the IDA website. And maybe Mr. McCabe might, might answer it. But if, if I read it right, some of the benefits of having the IDA is you can take that fee income or some of the revenue generated from the application process and whatnot, and have that in a fund that can then be used for other economic development kind of incentive, marketing, those kinds of things, almost becomes self-financing if, if you can.
If you can get enough fees.
Yeah.
Do enough deals, but frankly, the commission can do the same.
Okay.
You can issue the bonds, you can take the money, use it however you legally can. But, and depending on who the borrower is, sometimes. But, and depending on who the borrower is, sometimes the borrower may have various projects that it wants to finance, especially a healthcare borrower. Or a continuing care retirement community borrower may have facilities in other jurisdictions. And it makes sense to combine all of these projects into one bond issue because it's expensive to issue these bonds. And so you'll see interlocal agreements among the various counties where the projects are located.
Yeah.
And again, it could be a big bond issue with larger issuance fees. The issuance fees really vary around the state, and borrowers will look at what those fees are and try and take that into consideration in determining who the issuer should be.
Can I ask, from where you sit, from a regional standpoint, is there demand for these kind of financing tools?
The, the manufact, well, the one thing I didn't really talk about, I think it might have been on one of the slides, these ten-million-dollar small-issue bonds essentially can only be used for manufacturing facilities. So the code says what a manufacturing facility is. It used to be, pre-1986, you could use them for a lot of different things, but that's been a long time since it's been limited essentially to manufacturing facilities. So it does limit what can be done. So if somebody were coming in for a headquarters facility, for example, and wanted to locate in Flagler County, well, that's not a manufacturing facility. The statute was designed really for the pre-86 tax code, which was very broad in terms of what types of financings could be done. But then after the law changed, all these various projects that are defined in Chapter 159, Part II, most of them can't be done under the tax code.
I think, Donnie, I think you covered a couple of mine about the differences between doing the authority and the commission doing it. And then these are just for industrial. This is a, like you said, exclusively for industrial.
Well, industrial, really, now they're technically private activity bonds. The code, pre-86, called them industrial development revenue bonds. That term's still frequently used, but again, they're for manufacturing facilities. They're for first-time farmers. That's another exemption, but you don't see too many of those. But essentially, for manufacturing facilities, unless you're a 501(c)(3) corporation. And another thing about the manufacturing facility bond, the tax code requires you to get an allocation. Each state is limited to the amount of bonds like this that it can issue. And so the Florida Division of Bond Finance administers that, and you have to get an allocation from the state before you can issue these bonds. Historically, that hasn't been that much of a problem, but there's not really that much activity in this area just because of the limitations, and ten million dollars doesn't go as far as it might have gone forty years ago.
Just one.
Yes, sir.
And when you started, you said that the ten-million-dollar limit was there, except it was a health facility or a senior.
Right.
Care facility.
Yeah, those 501(c)(3) bonds don't have the ten-million-dollar limit.
That's the 501(c)(3).
Yes. 501(c)(3) is a code section for essentially tax-exempt hospitals or CCRCs.
So like Advent Health just recently built a new additional hospital in the county. If they wanted to use this tool, they could take advantage of it.
They could.
Yeah.
And one thing they might do since that, I guess, parent company has a lot of hospitals in Florida and outside of Florida, it could combine it with other projects and issue one bond.
And Mr. Paul, I think I get the answer to this, but you know, in our funding priorities for this coming year, we did have public health and social service project, but that's state health department. So, and that was, interestingly, it was going to be about ten million. It wouldn't, would it cover something like that?
So what would the project be in that example?
It's to set up a public health office like we have it. We have one now in Benel, and this would be in Palm Coast, a similar, about a ten-million-dollar facility.
Yeah, that's, that's really governmental bond. You can do that on your own, not subject to any of these limits. In other words, if the county paid for it, none of these limits apply. You can do whatever you wanted to.
All right, just wondering. But that, that might apply. You could do that, but you don't need this particular program we're talking about.
Right.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Mr. McCabe, afternoon.
Good afternoon. How are you? Excuse me. Mike McCabe, I am with McCabe and Ronzman. We're a law firm. We're presently in Ponte Vedra Beach, but I represent the county and St. John's County and a bunch of different administrative or governmental components. I used to be the town attorney for the town of Hastings, by the way, until it dissolved, I guess, gosh, probably four years ago, but that was kind of a fun run. So I'm familiar with the farming and kind of some of the things you're doing here in Flagler County. We do, in fact, have clients down here, but I think the part of, or Mr. Weinstein being here is understanding the relevance of who's looking for these bonds. When I saw your top five employers, Advent Health is your number-one target, right? I think we did the Presbyterian Bonds in St. John's County. I mean, what was that number? I mean, it was big. It was over a hundred-million-dollar bond, and then the county gets a fee, it's ten basis points. But understand that clients like his, they're shopping that basis points, the basis of the fee. So you could create all these things and have an IDA, an actual little IDA commission like we do in St. John's County, and then you do it, like, I don't think we've had an issuance in probably eight months, maybe, maybe longer, maybe over a year. So it takes time to set this up. Once you set it up, then you might get a little impatient. Our, in St. John's County, we're 100% funded by the fees, and we do things to try to raise awareness and bring additional industrial-type industries to St. John's County and work with the EDCs. I think part of what you have to understand from our perspective, from an IDA, if we created an authority, it's all within the statute, under Florida Statute 159. You can go through the list of the items that you actually have to do to create the authority. You, in essence, need to provide a need and then have some public workshops, and we would set, you could set it up that way by creating the ordinance and passing it from the commission. I think the benefit could be, it helps alleviate a lot of the groundwork that this commission would have to do, and then that authority could work on and work with, this is what we do in St. John's County, the EDC is in every single one of our meetings, along with the chamber, and they're brainstorming about how to bring additional business, which is, frankly, you probably have an eight-hour agenda already. So we have, well, depending on who the president of the authority is, sometimes it's two hours, currently it's one hour, but we're doing that process outside of the BCC. The BCC does get involved when it comes time for the hearings. We do the resolutions and the TEFRA hearing from the authority side, and then it's approved by the BCC.
Mr. McCabe, does the, is it the administrative side of it done by county staff?
It is. So the way ours is structured is there's a county staff person that helps with the notices and things of that nature. When it was initially set up, the authority was initially set up with St. John's County, the finance department did the approval of the bond issuance, and then the county attorney participated in that process. Once they started collecting monies associated with the authority, they then outsourced the council, the attorney side, along with the CPA side. So the way St. John's County has it structured at present is we have our own attorney and we have our own CPA, and they handle the opinions as the issuer council. So that's, that's how they set it up initially, and then ultimately, I think it changed in 2001. They amended the ordinance, and they did it initially in 1980, I think.
Yeah, I was looking at the last couple of meeting minutes and the approved budget. It looked like it was about six hundred thousand or so in the budget, and minimal fees for accounting, CPA fees, and not much of the other expenses. It looked like there were more marketing expenses, try to promote the county and the economic development side.
That's accurate. I mean, that particular authority, so we look at some key county events, meaning the players' championship, we buy some tickets, and then the EDC does dissemination of those tickets. Pre-COVID, we actually had Governor Scott come two years in a row, and we did a public partnership with AT&amp;T, and we had a sponsored tent at the TPC, and the governor came, and we, you know, we invited people that we were trying to court come to for industrial development. That's what we did in the past. COVID has changed everything from that perspective, but those are some of the things that they're doing there that kind of open your eyes. And of course, you know, there's always comments about, well, Jax USA is doing this. So, you know, we're always looking and comparing, but looking at opportunities to create that And I think the key component is the tax-exempt status that these borrowers are looking for. It's kind of a no-brainer from, and they get tax-exempt status. As long as they have tax-exempt status, I think the interest rates, I don't know how all that works. When interest rates are high, the bonds are very attractive. Isn't that correct from their perspective?
Not at all.
Okay.
Essentially, the interest rates lower than.
But when the interest rates were really low, we had a hard time being attractive to anybody. So there is market-dependent issues that are associated with any of these bonds. I think it's important to know that, that the IDA, the county, or the state aren't, there's components of it that are technically, there are special obligations for the IDA and the county and the state, but they are relieved from any liability or obligations associated with the debt. That's always one of the questions every time we go to an authority meeting of, are we sure we're not obligated to this debt? Absolutely, we are 100% sure. So I thought that was worth the conversation. So from your county perspective, it would be relatively straightforward. You set up a resolution, and you would create the authority and figure out, you know, initially, you'd probably have, maybe find a CPA to help assist in that process, and then maybe just use your county attorney as your issuer council initially and kind of see where it lands, but definitely something that's relatively straightforward to set up. Questions?
I'm okay.
Nothing else said, Donnie?
Um, just looking over my questions. I think we.
I think one thing, I'll just add this little component to be thinking about is there's always that, you guys, this county in particular has vacant land, right? So the one advantage you have is getting ahead of opportunities for land use. When you look at a lot of things that are happening within Jax USA and St. John's County, they're working on trying to find industrial areas that are nearly infill. So it's really difficult for these other municipalities to have these, they can't do it any longer, right? It's the highest and best use, and if it's zoned where a developer can put its highest and best use of his consideration, then that's what goes. And sometimes you get caught behind the eight ball, and I think Duval County and St. John's County has landed in a position where they don't really have enough industrial area.
And to that point, he wasn't able to attend today, but Jason DiLorenzo, I've been talking to him about this a little bit from the city, and I believe there's, there's strong interest on the city side to participate in an authority. I don't speak for anybody, but that's just my, that's my sense of it. Amy might be able to, you know, talk more about that, but so.
Yeah, I think this particular county is in a good position to get ahead of this before you see major development.
And I think, think the city sees a lot of those inquiries because of the, all the land they have, especially west of the railroad tracks and, you know, the 95, not 95, US-1.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Yes, Commissioner O'Brien, we've had one-on-ones with the city of Palm Coast, with Jason and with Greg Blasey from the chamber to share this packet ahead of time as well, and I, I can confirm that there is interest in the city. They would be able to use this program as well. It's not just the county and also Benel. And so with that, that concludes our portion of the presentation. And so if you wanted to kind of go one by one with each program and thumbs up, thumbs down, not sure, Chair, I leave that to you, how you want to provide us the next steps and direction.
I know in our prior discussions, you had a kind of a spreadsheet on our neighboring counties and what elements. Do we still have that to look at?
Not on us, but these nine are a combination of some more, some than others, but when we had our last workshop, these were the ones that have brought us here today.
I didn't bring my coffee.
That's all right. I know, are we able to do that, Carlos? Do you have, can you put the overhead on?
Yep.
I know this, since we had, we're talking about the other governments, this could also be an added item on the intergovernmental workshop that's coming up as well in a public meeting to talk about, to talk about this. So I know in looking at this, when the conversations that I had with Amy was definitely getting, able to match some of our existing counterparts so that we are in the same game, especially Putnam, Clay, and St. John's. Those are our immediate neighbors. Volusia's not on here, but, and some of them are low-hanging fruit. I think the fast-track permitting is one that, that we can take some of the elements from affordable housing and also put them into, into one for economic development permitting. Clay County seems to have, have four of them down, you know, has five of them checked, which I think are ones that we could also piggyback on. But open, want to hear from, from the rest of the commission on, on how you want to do this. I know some of them are more quickly approachable than others. Some may take a couple of, especially if it's a referendum one, it may be a target for twenty-six.
Yeah, what would, what would help me a little bit, now I'm kind of thick-headed on this stuff, is, is we have actual examples of how other county, you know, maybe, what did they do specifically to use some of these incentives? In other words, what kind of business, or did they incentivize to come here or whatever? Because I think they all make some sense in a way. Because I think they all make some sense in a way. You gotta actually do it. So I would be interested in maybe a little bit of that, you know, showing examples of how we would do some of these.
Okay.
Mr. Hanson?
Yeah, I thought some of them were, as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, kind of low hanging fruit. For instance, the fast track permitting, I think that's obvious. We put that into writing because we already have it for the, for the affordable housing. But also the tangible personal property tax abatement, or excuse me, the incentive wage grant, that seems like that's an easy one. And the recaptured enhanced value, again, that one looks easy, just in my little brain, that we could do those pretty simply. Getting into the industrial development revenue bonds, that's interesting. It's very interesting. But that require a little bit more work.
For, for my part, I, I think I have similar thoughts to you, Mr. Chair. The fast track permitting, again, I think that's something we should, we should implement. And the, the, I'm a little confused again, going back to the, to the tax abatements as why a referendum is needed and when we've used them before. That was part of the rev, a revenue grant?
Yes.
Okay.
Which was in, can be used in lieu of the abatement here. It's allowing the voters to essentially say, yes, we agree to absorb some of the, the taxes that normally a, a organization would pay for the purposes of economic development.
I mean, to me, I'd rather do them on a, on a case by case basis through the way we've done them in the past rather than go through the whole process of having to do a referendum. I just think the sales process there and the explanation and education process would be difficult. I'm not a real fan of incentive wage grants. I think they can get dicey with the accounting and, and, and the accountability of them from the recipients. So I, I, I don't think we had great experience with those in the past. And I'm not a fan of, of partnering on the public, private, you know, light industrial park unless we had a rock solid prospect that came to us and, and was willing to work with us and we knew that going in. I wouldn't want to buy land on speculation hoping that we could do it later. I think that's risky. And I would absolutely like to see us work on, on forming an industrial development authority and working with all of our other partners in the county, the chamber, the, the other municipalities and to, to get that done. I think that'd be a good tool to have going forward.
And, and as Commissioner Sullivan asked about some additional examples, an option opened to us was in our South Florida Association of County meetings. I had met with the Clay County Economic Development Director and he, he offered the opportunity to come back and talk about the examples of their successes. So that's an option too. And, and we talked about, you know, earlier today, Goya Sales being one of our more successful examples and, and which path was, did we use for, for Goya?
Rev grant with jobs.
And I think from a competitive, right, everybody looks at or compares, our goal here is to be able to formalize some of these in, so, so we can market them on the website or through contacts. So how does, how was that work moving forward on some of these? If we pick like, say the same five that Clay has, how do, how do we move forward with making sure that, that we get these formalized so they're able to be on the website and, and used in marketing?
Yeah. So whichever programs that there's a consensus for, we would bring back before you, estimated timeline of when all these could be implemented. And we would ask for that formal process at the time, whether it was a resolution, obviously some take longer. And then once it's adopted and set in place, we can start marketing it, whether it's through brochures and materials on our website, those types of efforts in collaboration with the cities.
So personally, I think, you know, the, the two easy ones that we can kind of piggyback on some language within affordable housing is impact fee and, and fast track permitting. Those are things that, that are built into affordable housing. And then, again, I, I like being able, I think we have potential willing partners in to look further into the industrial development revenue bonds and authority and and then on the rev grant program, which we've had success in the past. And I think that's a lot of work right there.
So the only one that no one's talked about, so we just want clarification, is the impact fee grant program, which is using the interest on impact fees. Is there any appetite for that one to come back or take that one off the table? Cause I'm just taking notes, which ones?
Yeah. Pardon me? I did, yes.
Yeah, yeah, I saw the impact.
Right.
Impact, yes. Okay. So fast track permitting, yes. Abatement, not for now. I don't have any checks next to that from the discussion. Incentive wage grant, there was mixed. Rev grant, I have yes. Impact fee, yes. No to private-public partnership unless type of circumstances, Commissioner O'Brien. And there's interest in the IDA and the revenue bonds.
And on this one, when we're done discussing, I know we had public comment at the end, but I want to open up public comment on, on this item and so if there's anybody, Mr. Blasey, or public comment, I don't want to make you wait through the other items, but give you the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Greg Blasey, President and CEO of the Palm Coast Flagler Regional Chamber. We have had the opportunity to sit down with staff and talk about the incentives that are before you today. Shockingly, the chamber is in support of all of them. But I, I think, you know, from, if I'm putting myself in your shoes and looking at the reality of the situation that we have in Flagler County, you know, where we have reduced the funding in economic development, there may be public concerns about funding some sort of incentives. Sometimes that comes up. I'm, I'm really glad, glad to hear the industrial authority and the industrial development revenue bonds. I mean, that to me, to the chamber, we think that solves an actual problem and creates an opportunity, right? The, the problem we're trying to solve in a way through this is we're sensitive to the county's budget situation and the county has reduced the amount of money put into the economic development. So if we can create a program that creates money for an economic development program, so you don't have to take it out of the general fund. I mean, I think that's, I think that's a win for everybody. We get money to implement some programs, try to get creative. And it, and in that scenario, you, you could even decide to get creative with it. You heard the gentleman here say, you know, look, the, the, the users shop around for these fees. Maybe Flagler County becomes the lowest place to get the fee in Florida and now we're getting a bunch of money that we wouldn't have already have gotten. I think it gives you an opportunity to get creative. The tax abatements, I agree, you know, I think it's, it's a, it's a push to put something on the ballot. You got to educate people. It could be something that we bring up at a later date, but I like the idea of the rev grant. Joya Sales, we've, we've worked with them, we've partnered with them and we're talking to them. When, when we went over there and talked to them about their experience, they were, had nothing but positive things to say about the rev grant. So, you know, to me, that makes the most sense. But the, the IDA and the IDRB are the two that I look at and say, you know, what are the challenges that we face as Flagler County? And this has opportunities to create solutions. So that's where we stand. Thank you very much for, for letting us speak. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Now there's only one in. But I do want to piggyback on your comment. I think every budget session, it's weighs on our conscience, the, the fact that we rely on our residential property tax base so heavily and appreciate Dolores and Amy coming through, researching these and bringing them forward because I think this commission is, is dedicated to working to create options to bring in that, that option for increasing our commercial industrial tax base and taking the reliance off of, of the homeowners. I think I've had enough to say. Anybody else?
I think that's good points you're making. Yep.
Commissioner Hanson?
Good start.
Okay. So as you said, the next steps are going back on, on these items and coming back with some additional clarifications or next steps to, to push these forward. And I think we've got four up here with consensus on that. Anything else from staff? Petito, did you have anything? No? Okay. All right. So with that item, we will close discussion on item five, economic development incentives. Appreciate everybody. And make sure the two guests that we had, give them a special thanks for driving down and talking to us. It's, it's nice to have that option. I appreciate that. Yes, thank you. So a couple of items on here to discuss additionally is, we'll go to item six, which is Army Corps of Engineers Funding and Payment Discussion. Wish Miss Petito will take the lead on that one.
Thank you. I know, maybe I've talked to some of you individually, maybe not collectively because we haven't had an opportunity. We have the Army Corps of Engineer contract where we have funding being paid to them in advance of the project. The due date for the payment was the 19th. We do have a 10-day grace period. So I guess the last date that we would provide funding to them would be the 29th of January. We do expect that the bulk of the funding that we're receiving to pay for the non-federal portion will be coming from FDOT. We have two agreements with FDOT. It's just a matter of getting those approved by FDOT. We've already done our side of it. They were sent over to them. We had anticipated that the funding would have been wired in on Friday, therefore we would have pulled it from this agenda. But because we haven't actually received the funding from them in advance of this meeting, we wanted to put this out there because we're not going to have another opportunity to come before you and ask for funding to be removed. What we were looking at doing is right now, taking a loan or pulling it out of reserves to fulfill the requirement that we have with the Army Corps. Once we receive the funding from FDOT, we would put it back into reserves.
At the, at the worst, what type of carry, how many days are we looking at? Do you, it's?
I mean, there's no guarantee. Typically, it's quick. I believe Hamed can probably talk a little bit more because he's had direct conversation with FDOT. I do believe that, that we thought on Friday, we were going to receive it ahead of the meeting. So I think they're moving rather quickly to give it to us. And again, you're giving the, if approved, I mean, this is for consideration. If it was approved, we're not going to spend it unless we have to. So this is the backup plan, I guess, if we do not receive the funding from FDOT in time for payment to Army Corps. We're hoping that we don't even need to draw down from reserves, but if we do need to, this would be that opportunity.
Yeah. I just, just, I don't know if you wanted to say it or not, but it's a significant amount of funding and it's not just the reserves. It's, it's, it's the, you, you always talk about the two-twelves part, but you might, I don't know if you want to put that out today or not, the amount that we're talking about.
Uh, we can probably pull it up on the screen. Hold on. Let's see if we can get that up.
It's in the, on item six, it's 13.2595 million.
Yeah.
I thought it was 15, approaching 15 million.
13 million.
Yeah.
13. So that's more, you know, it depends on which.
And in reserve, there was, if I read the backup, we've got 30.
We're going to pull it up, I think. We're going to pull up the transparency page and just show what those items, where you would be left in the reserves. So just bear with us.
So the, the DOT amount to be wired covers the 13.595.
It does.
Are you trying to put something up? Are we okay?
We're trying to put it up just so you can have a clear picture of where we are with the two-twelves, everything that had been approved and where we would leave off.
Gotcha. We'll give you a few minutes.
So again, what was the last date? The 10-day grace period takes us to?
29th.
29th.
The 29th of January is when the money is due to the Army Corps.
We still have?
A week.
Eight, you know, seven days, basically. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
We'd have to do this, we'd have to approve this in a special meeting.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Or, what are we doing today then?
We'll go adjourn.
We'll have to do a adjourn.
We're going to adjourn it.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a significant amount.
We have to vote on this.
Yeah, the deadline is before the next meeting. So she wants some guidance to get us to officially authorize it.
We had hoped that the funding from FDOT would have come back in advance, but it did not. And there's no guarantees that we're going to have it, but we feel confident we're going to have it. But here's the, if approved, you have the two bottom ones that have the 22nd, January 22nd date. If you see those two items, the one is the Army Corps Interfund Loan, that's the 13,000 and change. And then the next item on your agenda is the 2.5 million for disaster recovery interfund loan.
The 13,000 and change.
I'm sorry, 13 million, 13 million and change.
Okay. Very good. That clarified it. Thank you.
So remaining, you'll still have that 11 million if approved today. But again, this is only as a stopgap measure if we need it. We're hoping that FDOT's wire will come in ahead of the 29th.
All right. So we'll push this to the special meeting immediately following. And that leaves us with item seven, which is consideration of an interfund loan not to exceed 2.5 million from the general fund to the disaster relief fund, which is 1184, which is also shown on the spreadsheet.
Yes. And that's tied to reimbursements from the state. I think I may have shared with you when we were in Tallahassee, that we had one item that just finally got paid through FEMA and it had been outstanding for like a year. It's not a significant amount of money, but just goes to show you how long sometimes it takes to recoup some of the money. Again, some of this is tied to the state, DEM, some of it is tied to FEMA with some of the lagging reimbursements, which is why we had asked through legislature that they advance some of that money rather than rely on local government to cash flow. But that is what that 2.5 million is for as well.
And what is the return on this, the repayment on this one?
Well, you're at the mercy of the state and federal government on the reimbursement through DEM program. So we're hopeful to have it back rather quickly. The good news on this fund was that you started at the adoption of 16 million. You did have an update with your cash carry forward. So it did increase the amount upwards of 30 million rather than the 16.
Right.
But here again, I mean, you're putting money out to get it back and then
Right.
we've got a significant amount still outstanding for last year as well. And once it comes in, it'll just go back into this reserve account.
Okay. So we, any other questions on this one? Miss Petito?
I'm good.
Yeah, we'll move this to this, item seven will be moved to the special meeting as All right. That takes care of six and seven. Open it up for public comment, but everybody is gone. So we'll go ahead and adjourn, have a motion to adjourn in the workshop.
I should adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All right. Thank you. We will adjourn and reconvene a special meeting of the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners. It is Monday, January 22nd and it is 2:09 PM. So under this special meeting, we will go ahead and pull up item six. So under this special meeting, we will go ahead and, um, pull up item six. Item six is the consideration of transfer of funds to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, uh, the amount is thirteen point five, thirteen point five nine five million dollars, um, which is due by the January twenty-ninth, but due to the fact that we don't have another meeting, we're going to take care of this today.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the, uh, two-year loan to the Army Corps of Engineer of thirteen million, thirteen point five nine five million dollar.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Hanson and a second by Commissioner Sullivan, is there any discussion on this item? All right, hearing none, we'll go ahead and call the question, all those in favor of the motion signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. And then on to item seven, uh, which is consideration of an interfund loan not to exceed two-point-five million from the general fund to the disaster relief fund, eleven eighty-four.
Mr. Chair, move approval of, um, item seven.
Have a motion by Commissioner O'Brien, second by Commissioner Hanson. Any other comments on this item? Oh, we're going to hear from, oh, not this item. Oh, well, we'd finish that one.
If there was a problem.
All right, again, this is item seven, have a motion by Commissioner O'Brien, second by Commissioner Hanson, all those in favor of the motion signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Yes, sir, John, come on up.
Mr. Chair, sorry about that, I should have jumped up here earlier, but just want to make sure, just to clarify, um, the previous item that, uh, we're looking for, possible is like Plan B, like, uh, Heidi was mentioning, that we're going to use our cash to fund the thirteen million five ninety-five if, uh, we don't get the money from the state, the second part of that was, wanted to make sure you understand that we're going to have an electronic transfer for the total amount, fifteen point seven four million to the Army Corps, we, the clerk and I, us, were concerned that it's a lot of money, wanted to make it perfectly clear that we're transferring, you know, that much money to the Army Corps without receiving, um, we'll, we'll get it eventually, receipts and those kind of things, we just wanted to make sure you guys understood that, that's all.
It's a dilemma with this project, it's.
It is, it is, and it's a lot of money, it's a lot of cash, especially for, for Flagler County, um, and, uh, the clerk mentioned it, and I concur with them, that we just make it eyes wide open, everyone knows what's going on, so, I just wanted to clarify that.
Do we need to, I don't know if Mr. Indeed wants a comment, do we need to make a, have a separate motion on that, just acknowledging what we're doing here?
Commissioner, I, Commissioner, I think that is implicit in the action taken, we still have to disperse that amount of money to the Army Corps, and either we're going to get FDOT money in time, that it'll be their money along with the two-and-a-half million that was appropriated to Flagler by the legislature that will shoot over there, uh, should the DOT money not come in time, we're going to advance the, the, the amount, uh, relying on the fact that we will receive the DOT, we know it's being processed right now, it's just a timing issue.
Yeah, I understood that, um, I just was wondering if you needed a separate motion to acknowledge the specific amount that we're going to wire out, or, or as you said, that's already implicit in the motion.
It's in there.
We're good. Okay, that's fine, I just, just want to make sure.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, I was just stating the intent of the motion, essentially, restating.
Yeah, okay.
All right, all right, great, well, we've got those two items taken care of, open it up for a public comment, but there's no one in attendance here right now, um, so with that, we'll go ahead and take a motion for adjournment.
Move we adjourn.
Motion and a second, uh, we adjourn for the special workshop, special meeting, thank you.